You ready for the, it's on already. Thank you. I appreciate that.
Okay. Good afternoon, everyone. This is a special meeting regarding the tentative budget. It is a public hearing. And if all goes well, we'll vote today on making it the adopted budget. It's noon. My name is David McFadden. Let's, let's get this meeting started. This meeting is called to order. Can we have a roll call, please?
Certainly. Mayor McFadden?
Present.
Deputy Mayor Shaw.
Present.
Trustee Brooke.
Present.
Trustee Sherer.
Here.
Hi, Josh.
Hey.
All right. So I think that before I open the public hearing, I'll just check with my trustees here. My preference is to open the public hearing first, and then we can, you know, get a list of questions from people or comments and then answer them after we, after everyone's finished asking, possibly. Would you try that?
Sounds good.
All right. So be it resolved that the Board of Trustees open the public hearing on the tentative budget. May I have a second, please?
Second?
All in favor?
All right.
Okay.
All right.
I'm going to start with those that are in person. And then I will go to the Zoom and phones if required. So I'll start with you, Sally.
Well, I did have a question.
Just if you don't mind, just identify yourself.
Sally Sani, Wesley Road.
Thank you.
I noticed, actually, it's not on this one, but on the one that was on the website, but the sewage costs appropriations. We are, why is it more? I'd noticed before, now I just picked this up, so I'm just sort of stumbling here. It is less, we were spending in the budget, less on the sewer than we did in the past. Is that correct? That we did last year. It was.
Well, each, each year, now here I go answering questions.
It's okay, you're allowed.
Okay. Each, each year, the sewer, running the sewer department, it's going to be a different price.
I know, I know. But we are, if the sewers costs are going to be a separate bill, in other words, we're going to have a sewer district.
A sewer fund, not a sewer district.
It's not in our budget, is it?
It comes out of the general budget. Those numbers come out of the general budget and therefore.
We aren't billed separately for that?
It, it will be.
Right now, it's in your property tax.
Now it's in our property.
Right. And it's currently the same for everybody. Even people that don't use the system, that have their own sector tanks, they're subsidizing people that use.
House and things like that.
Right. Exactly. Now, you may have a very large house, but might be single and alone and there on weekends, and therefore that's going to be reflected in your sewer bill because it's based on water.
Yes, I understand that. I was just looking at the budget. I, it seemed in the one that I saw, maybe it was a poll, or it was, that you didn't have those costs in the budget. And I just thought, I'm really saying, we should be open with the taxpayers if we're going to have a lesser budget, budget, the normal budget. Because of the sewer being a separate fund, we must tell people that they will be getting another bill for their sewer.
Yes.
In other words, if the, if the budget goes down this year, and yay.
Right.
We must know that, in fact,
Part of it is, is the sewer.
It really might not have gone down because we are going to get a separate bill.
Now, actually, the, all the numbers aren't in, but we believe that we did this. We put the sewer money back in and we're still below.
Yeah, because I guess it is, yeah.
Now, just in case you don't know, we hired a sewer and water rate rent expert who we've commissioned for $14,000 to look at all of our numbers and make a recommendation and a presentation to the village. And that's including, but not necessarily limited to, maybe the, maybe the water rate goes down a little bit. But we'll see, and he'll make that recommendation.
I'm just saying, I think you should be very open with the taxpayers.
Yes.
To let them know that one of the reasons might be that the, it's a separate fund and
Yes.
You know, because then I think people might be in a state of shock and not very happy when they get that other bill, the sewer.
Yes, it's, it's, it's important how it's rolled out.
And I have one other thing, and now I can't find it, because this is a little different from what I saw.
Tree Advisory Board?
Yes. Is that on here?
It is, yes.
But we had for last year, $10,000. It's $10,000.
Okay, the Tree Advisory Board, are you referring, not the Trail Committee that you donated?
Tree Advisory.
Okay, so what's the question?
Well, it's.
Okay, so what happens is, this is going to be corrected moving forward, but it's really an independent fund that shouldn't be in the general ledger. It's, it's a dedicated fund, so all the money, it just flows through the village. So all of the payments we make are offset by donations to, from the, from the residents.
Right. Okay, because that confused me. I was, I didn't think the village had that, its budget to spend $1,000.
Right. And in order to be part of the community tree organization, we need to spend something in our budget every year. So we allocate $1,500 for licensing and renewing the certificate and things like that. And so that's in there every year. That's just part of what has to take place.
Do we get any advantage from being?
We've been told we can get grants and other things. I don't know if I've seen any at this point. I'd have to check with the committee. But I believe, and do you know anything more about that? I think, I think I'm accurate in saying that, right? I don't think we've had any grants.
Not recently. There may have been something initially where they got some small grants, but in recent years, no.
Yeah.
But you should also know, the public should also know, there are enough donations towards the Tree Advisory Board to cover that expense.
Even at 1,500?
Well, the 10,000 that was expended. There's enough in donations to offset.
Right. Right.
Yeah, we should just know those things.
Yes, absolutely. Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Any other questions?
That was it, especially my question.
Okay. If you have any more, let me know. Claudia, just state where you're, your address. Good morning.
Claudia Wetsoney, the Zenit Summit Road. Thank you for the budget.
You're welcome.
I know it's very difficult to, to balance the budget and keep costs lows, low every year. Process. I think what Ms. Sani was referring to, if we add all the three numbers together, the general fund, the sewer fund, and the water fund, we can see that maybe we didn't get a big dip this year, but we, we held, held it steady from last year. Thank you for doing so.
Sure.
I got five quick comments here and rattled through them really quickly. The first one is 5031A.
General fund or?
In, interfund transfer from water.
Okay, and what number is that again?
5031A, 5031A.
5031.
It's a monitoring fee that we set up.
Yeah, okay, just one sec. First page, okay. Okay, got it.
All right. Um, this is a monitoring fee we set up from the water fund some time ago. It was $12,000 a year. Went to 14, and now you're looking for 16,000. I, I, I still think 16,000 is not enough. I think we can justify monitoring fee closer to $2,000 a month or 24,000 a year. There's a lot of work that goes into, into this matter, a lot of work hours. So I would petition to increase it to 24,000 a year. In a similar manner, I would like to see line item 5031B added.
Before you go there, I don't disagree with you on that, on increasing it.
Yeah, we agree on a lot of things.
Yes, we do. I may have even advocated for increasing it.
Well, you did for, to increase it to the 16, yeah.
Okay, but yeah, we can discuss that. The trustees can discuss that. Okay, yeah.
Similarly, I'd like to see line item 5031B added. If it's not there right now, I'd like to see it be added as an interfund transfer from the sewer fund for a monitoring fee of a similar amount of 24,000 a year or 2,000 a month. There's going to be a hell of a lot of work, man hour, person hours done there. So if we can add a revenue line, 5031B, $24,000 a month, similar.
That's a very good pickup.
Your, your sewer fund has 9901F. It currently has $7,000 for the year, but there's no, it's currently not reflected in the village general fund as revenue. So if we make it $2,000 a month, 24,000 a year, I think it reflects a reality a little bit more.
All right, I'm not sure what you mean about that.
9901F, you have a charge on the sewer fund?
That we did not put in the revenue.
Okay.
Put in.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
You remember me as being a nerd?
No, this is good.
Mayor McFadden, right?
Go for it.
Furthermore, I'd like to ask, you know, the, the, the wrongs out there, how are you going to implement the sewer fund? From memory, John Bello reads a third of the meters every month. So it's a third, a third, a third, and then he bills it from memory. So people getting, read the meters first will get, will pay more into the sewers than if I'm on the, the third month cycle. Does that make sense?
No.
So residents on the first month of implementation will be overcharged relative to residents on the third month of implementation.
All right, so let's just presume that that is a possibility.
Well, just, yeah.
Then, then I'm sure will be directed by the consultant as to how to do it.
Right.
And how to read it and so forth, because if there's a timing issue, he'll have to correct that.
There is a timing.
Yeah.
Excellent. Bullet point number two. In my day, we used to get a pilot from the school. I don't see a pilot revenue line there right now.
When you say pilot, what are you referring?
Payment in lieu of taxes.
Yeah, we do, we do have.
On the revenue line, I didn't see.
Yeah.
It's part of the sewer charges, 21, 22.
Right.
Originally, 21, 22A on the revenue page, and then we have it under sewer. Did we? Sewer charges, 21, 22 on the sewer.
Yeah.
That's 8,000.
I understand that. We used to have a little bit more come in. You know, there's more than 200 vehicles each day in and out of the park. They do use the sewage a lot, so it should not be just a sewer charge. It should be a pilot, a payment in lieu of taxes. There's a lot of consumption, road consumption that these 200 vehicles do.
Yeah.
So let's see if we can get something from the school. I mean, I remember it being close to 15,000 a year that we had a pilot program. But, you know.
Do you remember that, Josh?
I don't remember 15, but I'll also tell you that the, it's a pilot, but it is closely related to water consumption.
Okay. So. And this is based on a formula that Chris Hansen developed in 2000 something, 2006.
And those are the components of that.
Right. And is it, is it fair to say that we haven't accounted for inflation?
We haven't adjusted the formula.
Right.
And it's based upon consumption.
So there wouldn't be an inflation issue because they're going to, oh, well, as rates go up.
Road usage, there's no, no compromise for the road. There's just 2,000 vehicles in and out every day that chew up our roads.
Shouldn't be exclusively based on sewer, I think, is what your point is.
I believe that we throw in some sort of number for plowing. Don't we?
No, like I said, it's largely based upon water consumption. It really has nothing to do with traffic or.
Do you know if there was a point in time over the different boards where that was dropped? Because I remember there being a fee in lieu of, for plowing, snow plowing.
I, I think on, in recent years, though, that, the bill for the pilot really cannot go out until after the April water billing. So there's been a couple of years we didn't get payment until June, by the time the bill went out and they paid us. So there might be a year or two where you see a zero for the prior year, but the, the new year, you see a double payment.
It's never. Right, it happened this year. So to the best of your memory.
Bills have gone out every.
To the best of your memory, there was nothing dropped between boards?
Same formula, same factors.
Is that your recollection too?
I, we had a pilot program that actually said pilot on the revenue line, and it included road usage, and it concluded snow plowing, and, and I've got your recollection.
I would add police, security. That's a huge selling point for them.
Okay, so I think we should reconsider that after our public hearing.
Okay.
Anything else?
Yeah, 1210 spot 40A on the expense line.
Yes.
It's a mayor's salary.
Correct.
$35,000. I actually think it's a good idea to have a salary for a mayor's office. I think that this will encourage more competition in next year's election, and the more high talent we can attract to the mayor's office, the better off we are. Tuxedo Park will benefit in the long run. I would encourage this amount to be closer to 55 or 60K just to attract the best talent that we can to the mayor's office.
Thank you.
Expense line 9730.60 to 70A. This is a debt service. That service went down dramatically. What is the reason, please, for this decrease? Have we retired an issue?
Yeah.
We have. Good. Good. All right. I'm almost done. 90, 15.8. New York State.
PFRS?
Yeah, 138,000, where none existed before. This seems to be 3% of the budget.
It's, it, it used to be combined, a combined number. It didn't separate the police force from the regular employee retirement. It used to be a lump sum. Now we separated it, just so you can see that one is for the police and the other is.
On the advice of the accountant.
See the line above it? It's basically cut in half from previous years.
Does this have to do with just one employee or village employees or the?
No, the PFRS is the, all, the, the whole police force. So the 135, 38, it's, it's for the police. The other is for the other employees, the retirement fund.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
One last one, 9730, nope, strike that. Expense line 1420.4A. And with it, 1910.4A. So 1420.4A and 1910.4A. Legal costs went from 60,000 when I was deputy mayor to 100 to 150. That's $140,000 a year. Similarly, village insurance went from 65,000 to 90,000 to $108,000 a year. You know, this is mainly the cost of defending the village from residents lawsuits. We had a high payout go out to a particular resident that shoots the village. My suggestion to the board is to cut down on the creation of lawsuits, please. Let's all follow the rules a bit more closely and treat each resident, each and every residence with equal respect. Let's try to stop enforcing rules selectively and against certain residents and not against others. Let's try to stop granting special favors to certain residents and not to others. Perpetious enforcement and selective prosecution will only lead to more and more lawsuits as residents are aware of their rights. Let's treat everybody equally, please, and I'll cut down on the cost of legal. Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, so I want to go to people on Zoom. And so you can raise your hand and we'll turn your mic on. Do we have anyone on the phones? No one.
Josh, can you page over just to see if anybody has their, Josh, can you see the whole? There's 12 attendees, but there's only nine.
I can see them here, and I can see that no one has their hand up and no one has taken their mic off.
All right, last call. All right, so very productive. Shall we close the public hearing? Oh, actually, we don't want to close the public hearing until we make our final changes, right?
Sure.
Okay, so let's go over them. First of all, I think that the transparent, I, I do believe we've been transparent so far about the sewer fund. But I agree that presentation is important. And I also believe that it's a little bit above our pay rate to determine what the rents will be. And that's why the board, I think, made the right decision in hiring a consultant who's going to, who's working right now, who's going to give us recommendations, and then he's going to also present to the, we'll, we'll have a working session or, you know, in, in the near future for the public about rates. And there's nothing carved in stone at this point, but I do believe in that transparency. Now, on, I'm, I'm glad you're still here, just in case I have to go back to. All right, so is it, do you think it's, it's fair to put an interfund transfer from sewer?
Yeah.
Okay, and what about raising the transfers from water? And I hesitate to do it for sewer now, because we don't have the rates. But I suppose we could put a plug number in there and then always change it during the year.
I think we can put a plug number. I, I, I mean, I have no idea.
Speak up guys.
How much water, I mean, how, how much more work there will be.
Yeah. Are you happy with the 16, or do you want to put in more?
I mean, I think we could do 20, but I don't know that the sewer fund, we need, I mean, the budget is smaller.
Right.
So I don't know that we.
Why don't we, why don't we put in a $5,000 plug number for the sewer?
I, I would do more than that.
More than that?
Oh, yeah.
What do you think?
I mean, maybe you do 20 for the water and 16 for the sewer. I mean, we just don't know how much.
Right.
Is going to be extra.
Okay, so let me just go around the table. Josh, this is for you too. Is his mic on? Yes, okay. So interfund transfer from water and interfund transfer from sewer represent administrative work and other in overseeing those funds. And therefore, it's common practice to transfer some money over to the general budget from the water and moving forward, the sewer. So based on some suggestions, I propose increasing the interfund transfer from water to 20 and putting in for the first time an interfund transfer from sewer at 16. What do you guys think of that?
Not knowing how the fees are going to look for the sewer funds. I'm a little hesitant to go as high as 16, maybe 10, and then we can always raise it next year, but then we have to pay that bill out of sewer to the general fund.
Right.
And, you know, that's, that's, it's something that has to be factored into the rates, and I think
Right.
we should give the public some time to adjust the rates and keep costs as low as possible. I think I, I, I feel more comfortable with 10.
I, I, I would say I'm supportive of the 16 to 20, and I agree with Chris. It should be 10 as the plug, because we just don't know yet.
Yeah, or we could even go to five, if you want.
I don't think it matters. It's small pittos. You're dealing with 277,000.
All right, let's do, so we have a 10. 10?
10.
Yeah, 20 and 10. Okay.
And that's creating a 5031A and a 50131B.
Correct.
Well, it won't be a B.
It won't be a B, but we'll.
It'll be a separate number, but it won't be.
Okay.
It might be 5031 point.
Something.
One or two.
Yeah.
Prostel is from 16 to 30.
Right. Okay, so, um, sure.
So this $10,000 transfer from the sewer, does that replace the $7,000?
Mm-hmm. Okay, so what was your next?
The pilot from the school.
Right, okay. How do you guys want to deal with that?
I think we should look into it.
Yeah, is, can we talk to counsel?
Sure.
And just, I don't know, Bob, do you know how pilots are determined? Because that'd be my question is, you know, what's, what's, what's the general process? And maybe that's something we come back to.
So I, I, I know that pilots are a possibility. I don't want to give you guys an answer off the cuff right now.
Okay.
He was discussing pilots for, for what? It was the school district?
Well, we have a, a, a school, a private school on our property that does not pay property tax.
Right.
And this is about charging them for infrastructure. For example, water, sewer, road maintenance.
And police.
Policing and other tasks, and it hasn't been updated in a long time.
So what is the board looking to do?
Well, I think what we're looking to do is to update that number, make sure it includes everything that we've discussed just now. Come up with a new number and have a sit down with the school. Now, it's, it's not going to be substantive in the sense that, you know, we need to reissue the, the tentative budget, because we have an $8,000 number in there now. I can't imagine it, you know, going to 100 or something.
Right.
Substantive. So, you know.
Well, look, you know, the, the board can include that number as it is now, and if, if it has to be changed, it can be changed.
Okay.
Again, I, I, you know, I don't want to, I don't want to give you an answer just off the cuff.
We'll put in a plug number. Is that acceptable?
That's, that's, that's fine. And I, I, you had, you had it at what, eight?
We have it at eight now, and that's based on water only.
Seven. Okay.
I think it's eight.
I know, let's see.
You anticipate it going to.
Sure. Well, that's a good question. I've heard some people in the audience say 25. You know, it is a plug number. I'd be inclined to say 20 or 18, but I'd like to get the view of the trustees. Chris, what are your thoughts?
I, I, you know, Tuxedo Park School is a great resource for the village, and they benefit greatly from the resources the village provides. And they, there should be some cost to them for what they basically get for free now. What I, I don't want to, I, I'm not comfortable throwing arbitrary numbers. I'd like to kind of figure out some value and what are the rules for determining pilots for nonprofit organizations and then coming up with a fair number that makes sense. So, I mean, and 2025 still seems like a bargain for everything they get, and I'm, I'm fine with that. I just.
Well, the issue is, it's a timing issue. If we wait to get that formula, we can't vote on this today.
We could vote on Wednesday.
We could.
Here, I mean, we have a meeting.
Yeah, no, that's true. Yeah.
Or we make it a subject to, right, put in a number subject to.
Well, or, yeah, or not an arbitrary, a plug number, which we know is going to change.
So.
And I hear it exactly.
I, I think we all think 20 is very fair, right? Or was it 25?
I don't know. I think it's a big change for the school going from eight to 28. So I think we need to, you know.
Yeah, so look, the, the board can, can increase the plug number so long as they can articulate the basis for doing so. So if you're looking to raise that number, you can. It just has to appear in the minutes of, of this hearing in order to approve it.
So we can leave it as is, is what you're saying?
Yes.
Okay, that's preferable, because that takes care of Chris's concern. And, and I share that concern too, so.
I would put in a plug number.
Well, we can.
Maybe 5,000.
Well, here's why we don't need to. Here's why we don't need to. Because by resolution, as soon as we have the information that we're looking for, and as soon as we have an agreement with the school, we will actually by resolution just raise that number and transfer funds.
It's not an expense, so as an appropriation, it's not.
Right, like, right, right. Even better, so.
That we're spending that we didn't.
Right, so we don't really need, you know, the, the idea is if we're going to wait to get it right, which we are, we don't need to change this at all. We'll just change it by resolution. Now, that doesn't mean we can't talk to the school now and say it could be going up. All right. Uh, okay, so we've decided to leave it, but we're all aware of what the future requirements are in terms of waiting for information from the village attorney on how this is done, best practices.
Yeah, I'll have a, I'll have a better answer for the board shortly.
Great, great, thank you. Okay, guys, what do we have next? Oh, the PFRS resolved. We took, um, I'm not going to comment on the mayor's salary number. If any board members want to, that's fine. I agree that the less lawsuits, the better. Absolutely. And that we should do everything we can across all boards and departments to. And departments to. Be very conscious of. Where the lawsuits are coming from, for example. Are they generated from the bar, are they generated mostly from the BZA? And, and, and really look under the covers. We have done something so far this year with that, include a moratorium on. Farming out costs, so we're saving some money there. At the boards in terms of bringing in consultants. And I've also mentioned in the past, the billing issue we found where we have, we're playing catch up. On sending out bills, we receive bills from the firms, but they weren't sent out to the candidate. Not to the applicant. And so that's an issue that we're dealing with. I, is that pretty much what you had covered?
It is, um, you know, I'd like the mayor's salary to go, and that, that having borders costs fifty five or sixty thousand, and this way the mayor's elections. Be more a little competitive, and we get the best we can from the poll.
And by the way. Regardless of the amount. Regardless of the amount. If somebody wants to run. On this issue. And say, I'm running against. Mayor McFadden, for example. And I'm refusing a salary. And then I could say, I'm running and I support the salary. See who wins.
Yeah, there you go. Since, since the proposal for salaries, one that I shepherded and made. And the idea was, we gotta start it at this point, there are ancillary things. I think. You know, I think. Long term structurally, the village should have a manager or administrator. I've talked to John about it. Bring in a part-time building inspector, basically have somebody who provides continuity on all these issues. Independent administration. And I think this is a first step. We've gotten some people say. Written a note, we just saw one of that, they were objected to that. The mayor. Excluded himself from the, from the vote, the vote was three to one. The higher number is appreciated. Let's reexamine that as we move into next year. I think thirty five is a good start, it's not paid for trustee services for administrative services. There's the burden on the mayor is from, since my first time here. It's pretty substantial, and I think it should be betrayed in some way or recognized in some way.
Do you know, what, what is the salary of the supervisor?
Uh, thirty seven.
It might be a little more than that, but let's just say thirty seven. Five, or, and then they, they also have a, they also have a, he has a fifty thousand dollar personal secretary. And an expense account. We don't have any of that. And I do, I do want to point out, you know, part of our taxes. That we pay to the town. Goes to subsidizing those salaries. And I think that we should also be willing. To subsidize our own salaries of our own elected officials.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not disagreeing, I'm just saying it, it might look a little. I, I don't think that the Tuxedo Park. Should have a higher salary. Than the town salary. Regardless of what the other perks are. I just don't.
Right, well, well, then, this, this complies with your hope.
It's a work in progress. This is a good start, I think.
It's a good start.
Trustee Brooke, if I may. I know you're looking for a village manager, but I think once you. Institute of Village Manager, you might not be able to go back to a village manager. That's just from memory, but.
Yeah, no, I understand, I mean, from, from my, from my perspective, very much on the outside. First term in this. There is certain continuity that exists in the village office. There are more and more questions that I've talked to John about, that he provides perspective and judgment on. And, and so he functions as more than a building inspector. Alright. And, and structurally, what we want to do is. I think what we want to do, we're in discussing it, we'd like to, to, to have a, an organizational structure that. Persists through different administrations. So that the burden on the mayor. Or the burden on trustees diminishes somewhat. So. We're more than happy to talk about it, talk it through. This was sort of the first shot, it was controversial. You know, good judgment comes from experience and a lot of experience comes from bad judgment, so if you've made a mistake, we'll correct it.
I mean, we could also. Try to figure out what the actual salaries of the town.
It's more, alright.
I can just, since we're talking about mayor's salary, just offer my thoughts on this. You know, Claudio, you threw out a, a number, you know, Paul Brook threw out a number, we're talking about the town supervisor's salary. What I don't think we've done is a due diligence as far as benchmarking what's an appropriate salary for the chief executive of. The village of Tuxedo Park. It's all arbitrary numbers at this point, and I think we should. Take a pause, I think we're moving in the right direction. But there is an alternative, we can take some time and benchmark similarly situated municipalities and see what those salaries are. We can pass a law, this board can pass a law. That says that the salary will take effect. At next year, when the mayors and another candidate may be able to compete. To your point, Claudio, you want more people to be competitive, and now there's a salary involved, maybe more people will come to run. I mean, the voters can then decide, not three trustees. Cause this is a significant change, the last seventy years, no mayor has been paid, and now we're gonna jump to a thirty five thousand dollar a year salary, and this mayor is doing a fantastic job. Generally elected officials get rewarded with the reelection. Right, and we're gonna, because he's doing a great job, we're gonna give him a salary, even though he ran for election, reelection, reelection for volunteer unpaid position. And I think if we. Kind of sit back and look at who should be compensated, because last year, the proposal was thirty four hundred dollars for the mayor and twelve hundred dollars for trustees. Now we're ten times the mayor's salary. And zero for the trustees. And so I don't know what's changed in last year, but I think if we want the best talent to come out, maybe we should spend some treasure. On trustees as well, but that should probably be a comprehensive analysis on what makes sense, what are other villages doing that are similarly situated? And the other point is. Why I support the village administrator as well. Is because there's a limited pool of eligible people to run for government and to be on our boards in such a small populated area. When you advertise for a job, you have all of New York State that you can draw from and, and pick the best talent. And again, if you have a great town out there that thinks I just don't have the time, but a little bit of money might help me help my spouse agree that this is worth, you know, spending my time on, then it's something that we should pursue as well. So. What I'm proposing is. We delay this for a year. We're moving in the right direction, do the right analysis. And. Make sure everybody's compensated the way they should be and deserve.
So let me respond to that. Your proposal is reasonable, but I don't want to kick the can down the road, I'm tired of seeing government stuff where the can gets kicked in the road every year. We started. We do this survey. We look at all those issues, I was very clear when I made the proposal. The services of trustee. You do without compensation. The executive function of the mayor, which is enormously compensating, should be compensated. And we have to figure out what that is. So I don't mind continuing to study it, we, we had that discussion. You know, at a prior meeting, and we had a vote. And, you know, that's why we put it in the budget, so my bet is, we leave it in the.
I just want to correct, I don't think we had a vote, that was done in executive session and think it was not there, so I want to make sure the record doesn't confuse, people will be looking for resolution, there was no resolution on that. It was a discussion, you guys agreed, they should go on the budget, that's where it is, but technically it wasn't a vote, I just don't want. People to come back and say.
Remember, I remember it was. Fine, whatever it was. I'm more than happy to, to, to put it in resolution if we needed it here. But the answer is, I don't want to kick it down the road, it's in the budget, I would like to approve the budget as is. Aware that Claudio suggested compensation should be higher, somebody else suggested it should be lower, let's start on this, and then proceed to do additional research going forward. Sally's comment is an interesting one. Which is. The compensation, forget. The secretary, forget the expense account, just whatever the number is. You know, I thought about when I was proposing this, the proposal that there be a pool of compensation for trustees. And the mayor, and if you elected not to take it. The residual pool would be paid to whoever remains in the pool, and I said, that's too complicated. Just keep it simple. Trustee position is not compensated. Mayor position, executive function is compensated. Thirty five is a good first step. We can take it up and examine it next year if need be.
And like I said earlier, if someone wants to. Is very much opposed to any salary. They can run on that.
Yep.
And that would be next year. Because the mayor's position is not open until next year. And I don't know if I'm running again, but. That could be an issue. Next, next election. Only if we approve it now.
I think we're.
Alright, we, we, but we could approve it, we could not do it now, pass a law that takes effect next year. Alright, so. Can I have a minute? First of all. I agree with everything that. Trustee Brooke said, I don't like the idea of kicking the can. I do think that there should be some compensation for the mayor's position, not for the trustees. I will also say that I think thirty five thousand. Is well below the amount of value. That is being contributed, at least by this mayor. I also agree with Claudio. That I think it's important to recognize that. We operate in a world that's very different than we did a hundred years ago, so the fact that we had mayors that weren't compensated for the last hundred years, I think is irrelevant. We're dealing. With the world we live in today. We have a very complex organization, I've come to realize that, now that I'm a trustee, there is a tremendous amount of work, and again, I think agreeing with Claudio. This token amount, and it really is a token amount for the, the, the work that, at least I see Mayor McFadden doing. Is really. Designed to provide some partial compensation, but also candidly, as Claudio said, to make sure we have competitive elections and that it, you know, that the mayor's office is not just a burden, right? That there's some offset to the burden that it creates so that we do get the best talent. And again, agreeing with. Paul. Trustee Brooke, the direction really should be to get a village administrator or a village manager, someone that can provide continuity. And, you know, candidly, we've done this at the club. And I think it's important to ensure that the board is really. More focused on the strategic vision. And the ten-year plan, the twenty-year plan. The fifty-year plan, whatever it is. And tackling big issues and not doing day-to-day management of the village. So that is a long-winded way of saying, I'm very supportive of Paul, uh, trustee Brooke's. Proposal to move forward right now. And. Candidly, like, we, we were elected by the voters, so when the three trustees that support this proposal vote in favor of it, it's with the support of. The, the, the village voters, and if people don't like it, as Mayor McFadden said, they can vote us out, someone can run without a salary. So I, I say we move forward. And I, I continue to support. Trustee Brooke's proposal.
Thank you. Okay, so I'll go around, is there anyone else that would like to speak before we close the public hearing? John? Be it resolved that the public hearing on the tentative budget. Is ended, it is exactly. Twelve forty-four. And afterwards, we will vote on the tentative budget. May I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Closed. I, I want to thank everybody that made comments, Claudio, your comments were great, thank you very much. Sally as well. Sally, your comments were great as well, we really appreciate it, you brought things to light that we hadn't thought of, and we really appreciate that. Alright, so before I propose. A vote to accept the budget. Does, do any of the trustees have any comments?
I would like, like to clean it up a little bit with John, like before we vote on it, so we add back the, the line payment.
Is it substantive? Cause if it's not, then we.
No, but I just.
You can just do it without calling another public hearing.
Okay.
Right, Robert?
If it's not substantive, correct.
Correct.
Okay.
Oh, and we covered everything, we talked through everything, so it's not like.
Make the changes.
Okay.
Okay.
One comment?
Yes, please.
So quite often, I share differing opinions from this board, and sometimes it's met with anger and this. I don't know, it's just tasteful. I just wanted to say I appreciate the discussion that we had. That I was able to share my objection to the way we went about the mayor's salary, and we had a nice calm discussion and everybody. Which is the way I think democracy is supposed to work, and this is why I am a member of this board and why I continue to share my opinion, even though I know they're not popular with the rest of the board, so thank you for the honest and thoughtful discussion.
Well, thanks, we agree. Diversity is good here.
Okay, so. Uh, I can't talk right now. Who is that? Let me, let me go airplane mode. Sorry about that, everybody. Okay, um, now, Robert?
Yes, ma'am.
Would you help me with this resolution now, we're, we're going to. Accept. The tentative budget with the revisions that were discussed today. And. Make it the adopted budget, is that the terminology?
Uh, yes.
Okay. Be resolved that the Board of Trustees. Accept. The tentative budget. With, including the changes that were made today. And. It will now be called the adopted budget. For twenty one, I, I'm sorry, twenty twenty-two and twenty twenty-three. May I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Alright, aye.
Perfect. Now, we have a meeting on Wednesday, regular meeting. Right, so that's it, everyone, thank you very much again, and we appreciate it, this meeting is adjourned. Well done, everybody.
I'll, I'll sign.
I signed the other day for hours. This is something we have to get automated.